Video icon next to it. Thank you. Yes, we do have a change to the agenda under discussion after the comprehensive plan update. Would like to add another discussion item related to the hazard mitigation.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none on favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to public comments, this is the time where citizens are encouraged to speak publicly. We would request you, please come to the podium, state your name and address, speak respectfully, and limit your comments to three minutes. Moving on to our discussion agenda, the comprehensive plan update, EBC.
Commissioners, we have Erin Eamonn from EBC on Zoom to help us help present this first reading of the comprehensive plan. So Erin, take it away.
Hello, I am gonna share my screen with you all real quick. I've got a PowerPoint for us. It says that the screen sharing is disabled. That's okay, I'll pull it up on my screen here and just talk through it with you all. Okay, first of all, good evening, staff, mayor, and commission. I really appreciate you having me and I'm very excited to be presenting this plan to you all. The final draft that's been provided for your review is the result of a year-long planning process that began last fall and included substantial effort and participation from both city staff, this commission, and the other members of the steering committee, as well as the community as a whole. The plan reflects comments and feedback that we have received from over 200 residents, business owners, community partners, and ultimately expresses a vision, goals, and strategies for where the community wants to be in 2024. Go ahead and get my screen shared here now. Okay, can you all see my slideshow?
Yes.
Great. Okay, so for our agenda tonight, we will start with a quick overview of the plan, including a reminder of what the planning process was and a overview of the planned sections and organization within the document. I also want to discuss the planning matrix included in the implementation plan to take a look at which implementation strategies the commission would like to mark as high priority. So we'll go through that after we do the brief overview in this first section. After we cover those items, then I will answer any questions that the commission has and will ask for your feedback on edits that you would like to see made before adoption. So as a reminder, the planning process included four phases. The first one being community assessment, which is where we looked at the existing conditions of the community and pulled in some data from previous plans and from the US Census Bureau. Second phase included the community engagement phase, which was the community survey, as well as stakeholder listening sessions. The third phase is what we just wrapped up. So during this phase, these plans steering committee established the goals and strategies that are included in the implementation plan, as well as the future growth and development framework and the future land use map that are included. And then final phase four is where we are at now. So our task today is to refine the plan and then my team and I will make changes based on the comments that you all provide. And then at your next meeting, you'll move on to the adopt piece and then ultimately get into the implementation. So the plan that was provided, the draft, it's organized into five sections and two appendices. If you look at page 11 in the plan document, provides an overview of how the plan is organized. But ultimately, section one is an introduction, so it includes some basic background information regarding how to use the plan and kind of explains why it's necessary and important for communities to keep their comprehensive plans updated and to use them. Section two includes those existing conditions, focuses on the existing demographics, the land use pattern, zoning, and then transportation networks within Concordia. Section four of the plan includes recommendations for land use development and the built-in environment. And this section is primarily going to be used by planning staff, city commission, and planning commission as you all look at approving applications like zone changes, conditional uses, variances, things of that nature. Section five is the implementation plan, which provides information on monitoring amendments to the plan should they be needed in the future, as well as outline steps for successful implementation of the goals and strategies included in the plan, and then also includes finally that implementation matrix. The plan does include two appendices, the first being appendix A, which contains the full community engagement report. So this section has all of the responses that we received from the community survey, as well as the comments from the stakeholder listening sessions in their full format. So if you wanted to get a more in-depth look, you could head to the appendix there. And then also is appendix B, which just includes the large format versions of the maps that are included in the plan. They're a little bit easier to visualize in that large format, I think. So like to include them there at the end. Okay, so I will move us forward to looking at the implementation matrix and talking through which strategies should be designated as high priority. I'm gonna pull up, switch my screen so you can see me taking notes. But if you go to page 59 in the plan, you'll be able to see the implementation matrix, including the 10 goals and 24 strategies. And then I'd like to hear from you all which of these you feel should be marked as high priority in that checkbox that's currently not filled out.
When you ask for priorities here, are you looking, I mean, are you looking to identify five that are top priority or one per section? Right there.
It's not appears so.
Sorry about that. I don't know, I got kicked out somehow. Can you all hear me now? Okay. Great, let me. On here twice. Okay, well, let's get started on talking through those implementation strategies and marking the ones that we want to be listed as the high priority.
Erin, I did have one question about the order of the goals. Is, are these in order, I mean, I guess we're marking them as high priority. Is there no rhyme or reason to the order of the goals?
That is correct. So because there were so many, they're listed in, I would say slight priority order, kind of from when we talked about them. But ultimately, really, this high priority kind of checkmark is what denotes what you'll want to focus on first.
Then will those, I mean, items be moved to the top goals?
Yeah, we can definitely reorder that if you'd like to have those top priority ones moved up.
And housing is listed as number one. That's what we're currently kind of maybe been working on, right? So, I mean, that is currently our priority. So I would say that's high priority.
I agree.
And for that, so under like the housing goal, there are multiple strategies listed. So would you like all of those to be listed as high priority? Or are there specific numbers that you'd like to include?
1.1 is our, it's kind of general enough to be the work we're doing now and ongoing work. I would say that would be number one.
I agree with that, I think. I mean, I think that they, if we're gonna rank those, I think they're ranked pretty much in order of importance. So Erin, I guess for our clarification, should we be prioritizing the priority of these within each goal set? So that it would be 1.1, 1.2, 1.3 is in order of priority within that? Or would goal 2.2 be marked as the second highest priority? I don't know that matters, but is that, how should we be best trying to organize this on our end?
Yeah, great question. I should have been more clear on that. So the high priority designation is just for that individual strategy. So it doesn't necessarily mean that if goal one has a high priority strategy and goal two has a high priority strategy, that that there's a difference between those two. If you are wanting to do more of a numbered format, like truly having a listing of goals, one, you know, one through 10, and then the 24 strategies and have them, those numbers reflective of their priority, we could do that and then just take out the high priority marker. Ultimately, it's up to the community and different communities like to do that different ways.
So being the highly detail-oriented person that I am not, I mean, I guess to me, it seems like if they've all been identified as high priorities, then how can we figure out this as we're moving forward, does this fit within those high priorities? And I wonder about the, if future commissions would benefit more from having that identified? Or what immediate benefit that would have for us as we move forward towards that? I think there, my thought is they're here for a reason, and so we recognize that. And as we move forward with looking at housing, which has been identified as a top goal, that having, I guess I don't want to get stuck in the idea that because this is 1.3, we can't do it before we do 1.2?
Yeah.
And I'm not trying to complicate it.
No, you're not.
If it fits, I want to make it work and I want to figure out however we can make that work. And so in that sense, I'm not sure that it's as important to me, but I don't know if that's an important part of the planning process that we designate that for future conversations. Does that make?
Yeah, I think we need to be more flexible rather than rigid and keep it general. I would agree that the housing for all ages and income groups is a top priority, so.
As, not to throw a wrench in it, is there a chance we could, now that we know what our homework is, to take a little time and maybe not so much focus on the individual points, but look at rearranging the goals in order?
Right.
Instead, can we do that and not do that during this meeting? Is there, is there, are we on a timeline?
Erin will defer to you. Did you have a specific timeline in mind that you're wanting to get this done? Or that you need to get this done?
I don't, just want to make sure that it's available in the format that you all are comfortable with prior to adoption. So I know you had talked about that next meeting in September being the adoption date. If we wanted to have that meeting be a deadline to provide feedback on reordering the goals, I could take it from there, reorder, and then provide you the copy for adoption afterwards. So that would be up to you all.
We could adopt based on what we're doing that night, the final copy come at a later time, right?
Yeah, and just say as amended or as discussed, that would be fine.
I agree. I like the idea of having a little bit more time, but I also like the idea that the goals being reorganized, because to me, the order that they're in seems like it has relevance, at least as I read it, but not so much the sub-goals underneath. The goal itself being the priority, so for instance, encourage the availability of housing for all ages and income groups. One, one really covers all the things technically, and one, two, and one, three, just kind of break those down a little bit further. But I mean, you could essentially, without saying the other two, achieve that. So I wouldn't, I don't know. I mean, to me, it's all one, one thing.
I do think, I do think that there's, I would, hardly, yeah. And, but I think if, I think that's where, as it's a living document that could be referenced in the future, that, no, they did have something in mind, it, well, this is age and place, well, that's not developing new housing. No, this was part of the comprehensive plan. I mean, there's, I think some benefit to spell it out there, but I think from my perspective, yeah, this is all part of it, because this is part of our ongoing conversation.
Yeah, and you wouldn't necessarily want those excluded, but by promoting a mixture of housing types and available housing for all ages and income groups, you're kind of covering all those things, but not obviously as a detail. And there are some other goals that I think are higher priorities, at least from reading, especially from reading the comments that need to be moved up.
So we want to take, official wants to take time to review these goals with the, through the lens of prioritizing the goals, I'm listing them in the order of priority. Did I hear that correctly? Okay, and then we could target, coming back to the September 4th meeting and reviewing that, setting those in place. Erin, what other homework or what other items we want to talk through tonight, then?
So the main other pieces is I just wanted to answer any questions that you all had and then get comments on edits. I did want to note that I noticed while I was preparing for this meeting today that there's some text in the implementation section that is duplicative. So definitely we'll go through and take care of that and add in the formatting that needs to be added for the table of contents and those kinds of things. But if there's anything else that this group noticed, specifically content-wise, want to make sure that that's brought to my attention, so I can make those edits prior to September 4th.
Erin, it's entirely possible that I missed this. I think, I guess I just want to make sure that this is specifically a guiding document and not a limiting document, right? I think that there's been a lot of concern that this is somehow now a constrictive guide to what has to happen, more than this being a planning process for how we can guide growth or direct that. I think, I think there's been enough misunderstanding that led to the departure from different members of it. So, you know, that this, I think sometimes we get, there are those who get really concerned that this is a constrictive limiting document, this is not our zoning, this is where we think zoning can go and how we would guide and shape, it's not, there's nothing legally binding by it, it is a guiding document. So I don't know if that's explicitly stated somewhere, or if it needs to be or would benefit from being said like that.
So the plan does differentiate between the role of a comprehensive plan and the role of what we would call implementation tools, things like your zoning regulations, your subdivision regulations, your capital improvement plan. So those are the pieces that are regulatory in nature, and this is truly just meant to be a guide. That is stated in the plan, but if you feel like it would benefit from being reiterated or maybe even put into like, like some type of call-out, like in a box or something to kind of highlight that information, I think that's, that's good feedback, especially if that's a concern that you've heard from others in the community. I want to make sure that that's addressed.
I don't, I don't know if others have heard that or shared that, or if it's, I understand the intent of it, and it makes sense to me, I just don't know if it needs to.
I like, so on page 54, it does reference minor amendments and major amendments. And I, I think that maybe adding some language to that, or like you said, just adding text to say that this is a fluid plan and that's not. Fine, you know, I mean, it already kind of says that here, but, you know, major events, so does that mean we need to, how do you make a major amendment, you know?
So.
Just significantly, then you have to go, what, and what specifically might merit a major amendment?
Yeah, I can definitely make that a little bit more clear. So it largely has to do with, like a minor amendment would be something, if your population changes in a few years and you want to update that, or if there's a goal that you complete and you want to remove it from the list or denote it as completed, that would be a minor amendment. A major amendment is going to be something that is so substantial that it would require adjustment to some of the other sections in the plan, so maybe the goals and strategies. However, even a major amendment shouldn't be changing like the overall intent of the plan or changing things like the community's feedback, things like that should always remain constant. To think like communities that receive new flood maps from FEMA, that's often a time when a major amendment occurs, because they might have to change their future land use map if FEMA's designation changes, things like that. And the minor is going to be those small kind of community condition updates.
One of the things that I noticed is that there are pictures that I don't recognize as being part of our community. Is that just, are these placeholders, or, I mean, I?
No, so all of the pictures that are included in the plan in reference to Concordia are Concordia. The photos that are in the place type section are precedent imagery, so it's imagery of a similar type of place. So those are meant to be more kind of inspirational or brainstorming of what those different places types could look like. And those, those photos are the only ones that are not limited to the community.
Well, I noticed one of the recommendations was that because we're on a gridded pattern in Concordia, that new development should be that way. Well, we've already not done that, so, because we put in cul-de-sacs in our new housing development. So, you know, it's already little things like that have changed. I don't know if that's an amendment or if it just happens.
That was, I mean, is that consultant recommendation or was that committee recommendation?
Yeah, so that's a planning best practice. It's not necessarily something that's reflective of existing subdivision regulations or current city policy. It's an observation of that there are areas in Concordia where this gridded street pattern has worked really well and provided access. And as a best practice going forward, it's recommended that that pattern be used when possible. That doesn't mean it's always going to be appropriate. There are definitely times where a cul-de-sac might better suit the layout or the different type of development. So there's some flexibility there.
Senior, I think that's, that's some of the nuance that I want to be able to maintain and just, I mean, I don't, I honestly don't think it's going to be an issue with the current commissioner, the current planning commission. And I don't know that there's that much transition in individuals that it would prohibit something from happening. I just want to make sure that we don't have a planning commission meeting in five, six years where we have an opportunity to redo a residential neighborhood and they say, well, we can't do it that way, because it says in the comprehensive plan that it's supposed to be a grid. I don't anticipate that being a problem, and I don't know how you necessarily secure against it, even if it's adding the verbiage of like when, when pruned or when most feasible. But I think if we start getting into that, we're really, it's into the weeds. So again, this being a guiding document, it doesn't have to be something that's ultra restrictive. This is best practice. It's not going to fit here, we're not going to do it, it's not limiting.
Do you think it would be helpful in that section to kind of add some of that nuance? So it says, I think findings, would it be helpful if that maybe was changed to say like findings and best practices? So it's a little bit softer, maybe?
I, it doesn't matter to me, except that I just think we're already, you know, we're, it's a guide. Set in stone.
Yeah, I think, I think that could be helpful.
So are you adding, where would you add that language? The implementation, the maintenance and monitoring, both?
So under the, the piece in the existing conditions section, under the transportation information, there is a section that has some recommendations for, it kind of points out how things currently are and then has some best practices described. So what I had suggested was maybe changing that header to better reflect that those are best practices and not, you know, mandates. But maybe actually, you know, as we're talking this through as a whole. Um, but maybe actually, you know, as we're talking this through as a whole, i- if the overarching feel is that there should be more clarity um as to what this document is for and, and really stating that it is a guiding document. We can add more, um kind of highlight some of that in the uh introduction section. We add some call out boxes to some of that information, so it's a little bit more attention grabbing.
I think that would be helpful, Erin, I do.
Are there any other sections that the commission had questions on or um things that maybe you heard from the community? I don't know if they um looked at the agenda in this meeting and provide any feedback to you all. That's always my favorite part of doing this, is going through and like finding all the, the gems throughout the communities and taking photos. It's fun.
We, we did bring up that pond thing several times, but then you read in here that the Concordia is four point six miles and a pond has to be three miles away from an airport. You don't have a lot of room. And do you, you feel, I mean, like, i- it appears to me that most of, a- as you read through the comments, the, the ten goals that were created or amended all, do all of the, the comments from community members kind of fit into one of those places? I mean, as I read through it, it appears so. I think as, as I went through with the steering committee, we had the stakeholder feedback and we looked at all of those comments and then we brought that up into goals and then brought that back down into strategies. So if I'm recalling correctly, I think that the majority of them got placed into goals, which was good to be able to use that feedback.
And also anything that wasn't, Amy's totally correct on uh to that her point. And then anything that wasn't specific, so it was more location based, that information was provided when the steering committee put together the future land use map. So comments about where specific types of development should be located. Um, that was included uh in advance of putting together that map and incorporated into that as well.
I think the thing that really stood out to me is that this is really validating, I think, of, of a lot of our, our thoughts and, and supports a lot of the work that we have been doing. And so I think that that's, that's encouraging. That a lot of those goals make sense with really a lot of the work that we're, we're doing now and, and shake similarly, similarly to how we want it to be shaped moving forward.
Um, so I have my notes of, of changes that you all would like to see. And then I know that you'll take a look at the goals and strategies and provide some ranking um to those. If there are not any more specific edits for me tonight, um I'll start working on these and then um wait to hear back in regard to the, um, the goal kind of um prioritization. Um, and if there's anything that you come across in reviewing between now and then that's unrelated to prioritization, things small. Feel free to please let me know as well and we can add those pieces prior to adoption.
I think that sounds like, that's good. Other questions for Erin while we have her on the line? We appreciate the feedback and, and the opportunity to come back with this. Be nice to have this done.
Yes, um, not a problem at all. I look forward to seeing the prioritization of the goals and excited to get this ready for you guys to adopt, so.
Would it, would it make sense to submit these priorities to you? Maybe like the, when would you like them? If not before the next meeting maybe?
If you can get them to us, we'll just keep feeding her the comments as I come in.
Okay, maybe have them to this, to our nuts, landing with them at our next meeting to discuss, then we can have some working information to process to direct that conversation at that point. So moving on to the hazard mitigation action.
Yeah, new commissioners, uh yesterday we participated, several of us participated in the Zoom call um with our county emergency manager as well as the consultants that the regions had hired. The emergency management region had to hire to, to update their hazard mitigation plan on a regional basis instead of the county basis. And we learned through that discussion that we were reviewing proposed draft mitigation actions for each jurisdiction. So our jurisdiction has mitigation actions, uh county, Miltonville, Glasgow, Jamestown, Aurora, for example, all have their own list of actions. This year with the hazard mitigation plan update FEMA is asking for one mitigation action for every hazard that we've identified as being a threat to our community. That's different than in the past. In the past, we just asked for whatever mitigation actions you wanted to, to do and that were realistic. Important to this plan when we get to adopt it in January is that it makes our community eligible for federal funding to develop mitigation grants. So we want to make sure that these mitigation actions that we come up with are realistic ones that we could do. And we want to make sure that they are of sufficient priority and robustness and that would make sense for our community. That if we go after those grant funds, that this plan backs us up as we, as we having that need, if that makes sense. So um, what we found out also from the consultants, uh the name, the name of the firm is Blue Umbrella. What they asked us is that we have consensus on these proposed mitigation actions and have that back to them or comments or edits or suggestions for improvements by August thirtieth. So I apologize for putting this in front of you so quickly. Um, I did email to you yesterday. This is our last meeting before August thirtieth, so we want to try to meet that deadline. I did talk to the consultant despite the timeframes that we were in. They're certainly okay with it if after our discussion tonight, you decide that you want to table it and then make a decision at the September fourth meeting to allow additional time. But they would prefer to have it, have it sooner. This morning, our department had team met and we went through each one of these items and we offered some uh suggestions for changes. One of the main ones that you'll see is the responsible party. Uh, this was written as if it was for a mayor council form of government where the mayor holds an office and comes in and frequently does a lot of work. In our commission manager form of government, you all have separate primary jobs and you volunteer your services. We greatly appreciate that. But it's on a very limited timeframe during the month. So what we changed some of these to is if it says uh city commission uh as a proposed responsible party, that means that city staff believes that there's going to be some major discussion needed on your part to commit the resources. There's going to be approval for procurement. And it may relate back to some planning that we just discussed with the comp plan, uh some needs there. If it seems more appropriate to have the responsible party be one of our staff members, we've changed it to the appropriate name of the staff member that, that is listed on here. Uh, do you want to go through these in particular order or just talk in generics? What would be most helpful for you tonight? I think we should keep it mayor.
Cause we're adopting this in January? I could support that. Apparently the mayor doesn't do any work anyway, like is what Amy said, so.
I said, your, your work is limited to a certain amount of. The process is, is that the consultant wants the information back by August thirtieth. During the beginning of September, they'll make the full plan available to everybody for review. We haven't seen the full thing yet. We've just seen this mitigation action table. Through middle to end of September, we'll be reviewing that action plan. And there'll also be a public survey open to gather public input to see if the public input aligns with the mitigation acting that we're recommending for approval now. At the end of September, they'll do a final review of the plan. And then it'll be submitted to the depart, state department of emergency management and FEMA in October. So that there is no overlap between our current plan expiring and the new plan coming to effect. After FEMA and KDM approve the plan with that additional public input, then they'll be asking the governing bodies of each jurisdiction to adopt the plan to which will be held. Now it's important to know that when we do have consensus on the mitigation actions as proposed, it doesn't necessarily bind us and commit us to perform these actions at this budget level within a certain timeframe. This is considered a guiding document similar to the future land use map that we just talked about, the comp plan. It could change as conditions change for us, but it gives us a starting point. And again, it, it helps to make us eligible for this funding streams and gives us a starting point there. Given the short notice that we provided this to you, is it okay if we quickly go through some of these hazards listed?
Sure.
Okay, so the first one is addressing all hazards in the community. Talks about purchasing and installing backup generators for critical facilities, including hardening electrical systems. This project is actually ongoing right now and it's currently underway with the Department of Justice grant that we received. With the emergency communications countywide project, we were able to put generators in place at most of the city critical facilities and some county critical facilities as well. The only, um, so then the next one would be dam and levee failure. The suggested mitigation action was to install evacuation signage. We discussed that at length this morning and decided that in modern times, it may be better to install an emergency alert system, mass notification system in, in the event that evacuation is needed in the event of a dam breach or levee failure. So most people have cell phones now. That makes a lot more sense than planting signs um on Broadway Street, for example. To have an action addressed for drought, I mean, the consultant proposed conducting a native low water planning program for all jurisdictional owned facilities. So this would mean all city owned parks should have a landscaping plan that's drought tolerant. We just recently adopted our water conservation plan and that actually addresses some of those needs and is a little bit more robust than just having a plan in place. So we felt that it makes more sense to amend that mitigation action to adopting that water conservation plan. We can reference that plan been completed as well. To address extreme temperature, severe winter weather, the consultant proposed identifying preparing jurisdictional building for usage as a heat and cold shelter. We thought about our facilities that we own as a city and realized that if we're in such an event that requires mass sheltering of people in the heat or cold, we may already have our facilities stood up as an emergency operations center. So we may not have a facility that's appropriate, but some of our partners and, or entity organizations in the city do. And so we modified that language to say we're going to partner with other entities for the operation of that facility. To respond to a flood, uh continue participation and compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program, which we're already doing. Bruno's or flood, flood plain manager right now has been a great job with that program. Uh, an additional response toward floods to construct rainwater detention and retention ponds or other flood control projects at strategic locations. We already have the twenty-first street dam and the Plum, Plum Road dam built. That's great. But recently, we've also talked a few about identifying challenges at the north end of the community or specifically around the railroad tracks, Washington Street, Cedar Street, State Street. Where our storm sewer system has some pinch points. We wanted to leave this one in um so that we could look to address items such as that. So if you see on the potential funding source here, it has uh the hazard visit, hazard mitigation grant programming uh which is a federal grant fund, the bridge program funding, um as well as jurisdictional budget, which we typically use for a, a local match of some kind. We wanted to keep this one in and called it ongoing because we've already done some work with those dams in the southern part of the community. But we want to add um additional projects in the north end of the community to address that flooding that's impacting businesses and residents a- around that railroad. Does that make sense? You flip your paper over, uh one of the responses for severe weather tornado fires was installing high wind hail and fire resistant roofing on all jurisdictional facilities. We talked through quite a few of our facilities. We believe we're already protected. We're going to provide some great expertise on some of the fire resistant properties of a lot of our flat roofs. But we know that there may be other facilities that we have that we didn't identify this morning that may need some additional work later on. We know that roofs don't last forever. So we'll list that as ongoing. Constructing community safe rooms on select jurisdictional buildings. Um, a- again, we know that if we have a, a major event, um we may not be able to open a city facility for the, for the public. We definitely want to protect our own um employees as, as are here. But we've also had conversations about a community activities center recently. And perhaps as, as we advance those conversations, if that were to come to fruition, having this online item on here may allow us to construct a safe room within that facility and again be able to apply for hazard mitigation funding to help fund that project. So those, that's the reason we wanted to leave that one on here. The number nine, uh here we've struck it completely out. This was giving the city responsibility to purchase weather radios for the general population. We believe that that uh specific mitigation action may be better suited in the county emergency managers' um realm and responsibility. Uh, at the time, this one said not started lack of funding. That implies that it was on our previous plan prior to hiring a, a full-time county emergency manager. So now that we have a full-time county emergency manager, it makes more sense to, to shift this over to, to their program and address the need across the county. Number ten is a response action for severe winter weather, educating residents about driving in winter storms and handling winter, winter related health effects. Um, we have city commission responsibility for this. This would be a public, publicity campaign. This would be ongoing. Um, some things that, that we do occasionally with winter weather, such as don't park on the snow pile route, the emergency snow route so that we can get through and make sure that our emergency vehicles can get through. Number eleven, response to wildfire, create defensible space buffers at all critical facilities. This one falls to the fire chief. James did some research on what these defensible buffers were and how they might relate. Um, this, this would be something new, but it closely relates to development of newer existing businesses and redevelopment of certain areas. And we'll need to work closely with Bruno as it relates to zoning and building code regulations to make sure that we can get adequate firefighting access to a facility structure or to prevent loss of life and property. For example, I think some of the research that you've done, James, the uh, the area immediately surrounding a building may not need to be combustible materials. Or if we can create a little bit of buffer around that, then that could protect that structure from catching on fire and, and being consumed. Um, believe it may also give us some support for continuing controlled burns in certain areas of the community. So this, this was an important one, um but it can reflect some existing ongoing work that we're doing as well. Any questions on these or suggestions for improvement?
Is there, is there some specification as to what constitute a critical facility?
We talked about critical facilities. Um, for the city, our definition, our working definition among the departments of critical facilities would be our city hall, fire EMS, police department, wastewater treatment plant, well facilities. And did we add another one in there?
Shaw.
The, the, the city shop. So we consider those, those are our facilities. If we need to respond in natural disaster, we need people, equipment and space to work from those to go out and take care of the community. We need those to continue to provide ongoing basic services to the community.
Um, is that, so that would be our definition of it. Is there a different definition or an expanded definition that FEMA would utilize? That would allow us to have better additional access to funds so that if we identify our, our food retail locations as being critical for an emergency, does that then increase our access to funding to help take care of different commercial properties perhaps or others?
We'd need to look into that. We talked about that today. So for example, when we're doing our tabletop exercises, we typically say the hospital is a critical facility. Our education are critical facilities for shelters. Um, in, in this case, where this is just what is under the jurisdictional responsibility, under your existing authority, under your existing budget authority, we didn't feel that it was appropriate to include those facilities. We need to check with FEMA to see if that would be appropriate because they're located within the city limits of Concordia, should we include those? And what we don't know is if, if this plan gives us access to federal funding, those hazard mitigation grants, can the city apply for those funds and then give them over to those other entities or use them for improvements or hardening at those other entities to make sure that the critical facility continues operating in a disaster? We don't have those answers. We all know.
Yeah, I think that that'd be good, good to know. I, I would like the opportunity for funding without the obligation or responsibility.
So it'd be, be the definition of critical facility and do we need to include any of that in this plan?
And I wondered, and remember, can, with the police department, it shouldn't be along with the city commission. I mean, I'm not going to go out and tell people how to drive in winter storms. I might, under my breath.
So add, add police department under responsibility under number four?
Well, to me, there are ones who would educate people. Well, to me, they're the ones who would educate people about, about the drought.
Any other questions or comments since there's all the first few of this?
No, I think. Yeah, I think it's pretty in line with what. We're doing, I don't think it's surprising.
Wait, and but just to revisit like number three, the drought, for instance, that's completed already. But because of drought. One has to be on there. We don't have anything else planned or in route. That would be the most necessary thing. There's nothing else that should be put there. Even though. Okay.
Nothing, nothing that we could come up with our discussion this morning.
And then as far as estimated costs, how important are those? Because, you know, we'll say. That it's five times the amount that's listed here. Are they gonna? Reference this as far as what, you know, funds are willing to de- distribute or delegate to us because if it's the case, I would want some better. Information on the cost and better estimates, yeah.
I will ask on that. That wasn't part of the discussion during the resume meeting yesterday. So I will ask on that.
Yeah, that you, you only asked for five thousand per location or stated that, but we're only going to give that to you.
Yeah.
Yes.
Other words, the revisions all look good. Uh, I wonder how the mayor was kind of pulled off too, so.
Well, the mayor works harder than people think. Maybe that's why the people in Washington.
Do you guys feel comfortable providing consensus tonight as amended? Would you like to wait until the September fourth meeting to provide full consensus after we have some answers to these other questions and then provide response? Again, I, I don't feel really good putting this in front of you after just learning about it yesterday. You have less than twenty four hours to take a look at this. And I think it's really important. That you feel good about what you're recommending. So we'd be more to. Delay that that's fine.
Um, I think to, to kind of speak to a little bit of what maybe Amy was saying, I, I don't want this to be a limiting document. I, I think that. Most of us would probably agree that these are all. Potential concerns and, and. If there's a decent consensus about how we might go about trying to mitigate that, I. I wouldn't want to limit us in any way in funding. Um, so that would be the, that would probably be the primary. Change that I would suggest is if, if we have access to more, that we'd be able to access more. So if that fits in within the consensus, I'd support that, but I would want to know more information for. We disagree with the five thousand per location, but it could be ten or twenty.
And that's some, we don't even have anything delegated because they're dependent. So, right. Is it better to do it that way?
I agree too. I mean, with adding like other facilities in there, you know, the, the idea of. Maybe cold weather and the grocery stores or other food suppliers, you know, like a helper access to the hospital, helping support those is pretty important as well, even though they're not city buildings. So. Adding those up be. If it's within our. Ability to do would be a very good idea.
But we won't know all those things till the next meeting.
Right.
So do you guys want to wait for the next meeting?
I think we have to because there, there's a few things that are just unknowns. We do appreciate that you guys came together and. Updated all those things, though I, I do think it's significantly better than what it was. When we first received this.
The due date is that, is that August thirtieth? The consultant initially wanted the information back on his thirtieth. I called him after the meeting and told him that was extremely aggressive, given that we're working with several entities of local elected officials that are subject to coma laws. And it's really important to have their consensus before they put something in a document that goes to FEMA and the state for approval.
I appreciate their understanding with a four day. Yeah, extension.
Yes. So they were, they were okay with us waiting and then giving them final recommendations, um, immediately following the meeting.
Very gracious.
Thank you.
Moving on to our action agenda.
I moved to approve the minutes of August seventh, twenty twenty four. Second.
Move by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner, uh, Wentz to approve the minutes of August seventh, two thousand twenty four. During further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving under appropriation ordinance. Fifteen.
I didn't have, um, Stacy's email access right now. Okay. I, I didn't look at my whole packet until around four this afternoon, so. She's going to email us. Can we move it?
Moving, uh, on to the grant agreement for box hanger.
Very interesting. We've recently completed construction of the box hanger at Gloucester Municipal Airport. We're still working through some touchless items. So. Shane spent quite a bit of time out there making sure everything is right and correct before we accept. Um, the, the final turnover of it. Um, if you'll recall, when we started this project, uh, Brad Waller with finish explained that we were going to use multiple years of funding from the FAA and a couple of different sources. So we have our normal AIP grant. And then there, there was additional bipartisan infrastructure law funding that came down through the airport improvement grant that was available to us. And all of that helps to reduce, um, our, our portion. Um. Typically, these are ninety percent of eligible costs of the FAA will pay and the city provides a ten percent match. All in all, it's gone through design and construction. The city's ultimate contribution, um, is expected to be one hundred fifty one thousand, four hundred eighty seven dollars and seven cents, provided we don't run into anything here at the very, very end. Um, and we included this match as a combination between the FY twenty three and FY twenty four CIP budget. So that's already been allocated. Now what we're looking for is the grant, um. The grant pieces of it. So we have this grant that's in front of you right now, which is a BIL, um, airport infrastructure grant. It was awarded back in July and then we go through the secondary, um, FAA approval process and we're bringing this grant agreement back to you to say, yes, we accept these funds with these conditions. This amount is for a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. There will be one to two more grants that we bring back to you again. Um, both this similar amount and what's slightly less to finish this out. Those grants are allowed. They can look back a couple of years of projects that have been completed. Um, while we do that, it also allows us to kind of pause projects at the airport for a little while and build up the additional, uh, AIP funds that come to us. We usually get a hundred fifty thousand a year from the airport. We can bank up to six hundred thousand of those before we start using that. So that gives us a little bit of time to build those funds back up. We also use the amount of banked funds that we had toward this project. Um, all in all, the, uh, total cost for this, this project, um, ended up. Being just over one point five million dollars with design and construction. It turned out really, really nice. We'll be able to start leasing it out here as soon as we, uh, take control or take possession of the building. Uh, so the grant agreement is in your packet. We have to have the governing body formally authorize us to sign the grant agreement to in order to accept those funds of a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. So tonight we ask that you. Um, authorize, authorize me to sign the agreement and then we'll send that back to the FAA and then we'll process the, the reimbursement for those funds. We did get it to her, uh, when we get permission. That's very nice that they are willing to do that look back for that dream. As well, since we already had gotten further into it before knowing about it. Move to authorize city manager to sign the grant agreement with the FAA for Gloucester Municipal Airport in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Second.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Jackson to authorize the city manager to sign. The grant agreement with FAA for Gloucester Municipal Airport in the amount of one hundred thirteen thousand dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to resolution twenty twenty four, twenty one seventy six. That'd be the, uh. The urban area boundary.
But commission. So a little history behind the, uh, urban area boundary, um, the Federal Aid Highway Act of nineteen seventy three has been a legislative requirement. Has been, uh, to maintain the functional classification system. Although some things have changed since nineteen seventy three. Requirements to functionally classify roads for access to federal funding is still in effect. Rural and urban funding differences are based on urban definitions from the census, which change every ten years. Well, description about the urban area boundary, a, a good way to describe it is. The UAB, which is the yellow dashed line on that map. Is. That it takes the census's UCA is just the gray. Um, that are developed to expand them out to transportation related boundaries that encompass the area in the city. That have a strong likelihood of possessing urban character within the next five to ten years. It has to be continuous and can exclude anything identifying and identified as being in the census's UZA. These roadways must be identifiable as related to roadway infrastructure using roads, bridges. Railroads, rivers, lake shores, survey limits as the boundary rather than the census tracks.
The, the, the pros of. Updating this is that there's potentially more funding available for roads in those areas.
Yes, yes, the roads that are higher classified as just local roads. So you have to prove.
I saw the, the numbers showing. Um, they monitored vehicles passing those points.
Yeah, there's a, there's a map in there, or, yeah, and it shows back in, I think, two thousand twenty. Two, they did a, a road survey. So that's how they, they get their classifications for the roads.
So it is, I mean, to our benefit to update it, to include those areas because then there's potentially more funding for those roads. Any downsides?
Uh, not that I found, um. Everything seems legit. So, um. Those, those roads will be, we get, we definitely get grant, our grants and state grants and federal grants for. Down to a minor arterial or whatever, or minor. Like collector. So.
I think it's important to point out, this is just, this is not our boundary, nor are we trying to.
Yeah. This is just, uh, for road classification only.
Yep.
No one's coming to take your land.
No one's going to take you.
No one's taking your land. It's our integration.
We, we did, we did a, ask the question, um, KDOT about maintenance.
Yeah, and, and so the, uh, the boundary will not extend past our obligation of maintenance for the city boundaries, you know, the, I think it's on the south part of that, it goes down a lot further. Um, on eighty one, our, our limits are going to be where they are.
Okay, so, so if a road is included in the UAB, but it's still outside of the city limits, then we aren't. Taking on obligation for that, right? This doesn't change anything other than.
Right. It just.
Other than the classifications. Of the roads.
So. This is a twenty, twenty and a half. Because this. East development is in the city limits. And it's not, then show us. On this, if I look at the best.
So we need to, we need to remind KDOT that they need to extend the city level boundary appropriately to that east area.
Right.
But the, the yellow line for the proposed UAB does follow that.
Not that we're going to need roads.
Any other questions?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty four, twenty one seventy six.
Move by Commissioner Hutchinson, second by Commissioner Wentz to approve resolution twenty twenty four, twenty one seventy six. During further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Moving on to league voting delegates.
Very interesting. So the league having their conferences coming up in October. And we are afforded to voting delegates to vote on the statement of municipal policy for the twenty twenty five legislative session, which is the big, uh, agenda item that we need votes for. The other items are if there's any bylaws changes or constitutional type changes coming up that are associated with the league. I don't anticipate any of that coming up at this point in time based on the work on the governing body, but this statement of municipal policy will be the big, big deal. The vote will happen, I believe it's on the Saturday morning of the conference, um, October twelfth, twelfth. So, um, I know since in my Friday notes, kind of the dates of the conference, didn't know if any of you had had a chance to take a look at those dates if you wanted to attend, even I know you attended the last year. There's usually fairly good programming. Um, so if anyone wants to attend, we can, you can do a package of the entire conference or just a, a few days of it. If there's something that's of interest to you or if your schedule doesn't allow other attendance. I'll attend, but in order for us to vote, we have to make sure that we name who our voting delegates are and then who are all, all the members are. Last time I knew that we brought this up, um, last year, we took a, a time after this discussion, thought about it, came back the next time and assigned to the delegates. We're after you had time to like take a look at your calendars to see who could attend. So if you're ready to name the delegates and decide who's going tonight, we can do that or we can save that for next time this fall. Where's it at? Which, which again? What were the dates? The eleventh and twelfth? Leave it, um, starts the tenth, eleventh and twelfth, but the bulk of the programming is the Friday and Saturday.
But for purposes of this, you can just show up on a twelfth?
You could.
Okay. I felt like there was a lot of, I mean, not the last one, a lot of good information and, um. Education on. Just different programs throughout the state. So I think it would be wonderful. One of us did go to those as well. I did go last.
Some of you benefited from the process and I hate to rob you of that.
I certainly did. I, I really did. I think we all did as a community, which is one of the. Who's available that particularly?
Uh, I know, I know he's at junior high. League or I'm not sure of the proper designation for that. Most likely be obligated.
I'm traveling.
He stays at home. So that means I'm a widow. I'm happy to go.
We have an extra ticket.
Please. I'll be the, the alternate.
Ashley now. If everybody agrees with that.
Back up, argue.
Okay.
I can only go to twelve. I can only go that one.
You can go again?
I'm you too, but no, I'm not. Recognize that.
They do offer, even if you don't attend, like most of those, um, conferences had. I don't know. Um, they had opportunities to still get their information.
Yes.
From those through.
Philly would send them out, um, or post them on the website or send them out afterward.
Yeah.
And you're not a voting member though, are you?
I can vote, yeah.
I would, I can't make a bunch. Well, then I would move to appoint Ashley Hutchinson and Amy Lang as voting delegates and Amy Jackson as alternates. Moved by me, second by Commissioner Wentz to appoint Ashley Hutchinson and Amy Lang as voting delegates and Amy Jackson as alternate. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Move on to the demo program application for three sixteen, East Sixteenth Street.
These three trailers. Were purchased by Mr. Barry. I have to apologize. I didn't get the bids in here. I don't know why. But there were two bids, Dalton Snyder and twelve thousand dollar bid, and a gentleman named Jay Joy had a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar bid. I think I got them on the file in my office, but. Anyway, these have been, as you can see from my condition report, these. Trailers, this area has been a nuisance forever. The trailer, two of these trailers haven't been occupied in water since the nineteen nineties. I followed the previous owner on them multiple times and he's linking up and then it will get me black. I followed the previous owner on them multiple times and he's winging it up and then it will get neglected again for a while, so we highly recommend it. These get accepted into the program based on the lowest bid of twelve thousand dollars, which would be a reimbursement of our maximum of four thousand dollars.
So Blake already does own this property, right?
Excuse me?
Is that who?
Yeah, Blake.
Blackberry. Yeah, his intent, he's going through zoning change. In fact, I'm sending the packets out today. I got them all gathered and tomorrow they'll be distributed for uh he's requesting his zoning change and a conditional use permit. Wants to put an RV storage facility there. Jumping a C three across this Kansas street behind O'Reilly's.
So I have a question, if he he has three trailers and you only get one reimbursement. I mean, if there was only one trailer there, you'd get reimbursed for it. You know, cost wise.
Yeah, we we kind of wondered about that on the on the uh travel trailer part, Commissioner Gray wants to do. Because I told him, I said, I don't think the commissioners put up with the demo program for each trailer.
Yeah.
But I said if you probably put them in groups, you know, we'd probably be okay, but he intended to remove one of them, I think he had sold and they're coming to get it, take it out of town. I told him he's gonna sell to anybody in there. And then two of them, or one of them he's tearing down by himself. And then the other one he's not deciding on and still somebody's interested and maybe taking and living in it. But he put three on the demo program, over nine thousand for three of them, a Dalton, but these are a little rougher, they they're full of young. So I think he raised, but it's silverware, over the world's good too. But I don't know how you treat that. I that's an interesting question because the way the program is set up is per structure. You know, but if you, if you, if you held that technically, then if you had a house and a garage and a shed, but it it still all has a a basic cost, so you know, if you did the shed for five hundred, we'd reimburse you two fifty, you'd be the house for three thousand. You know, it's still gonna all kind of come out of the math, I think.
His would change by two thousand dollars if you, I mean, three trailers, four thousand dollar piece for that particular bit, he would get six thousand.
Correct. Correct. And we had talked about increasing the uh the maximum refund, you know, fifty percent up to four thousand, we've talked about raising it from fifty fifty percent up to five thousand. You know, it's pretty hard to get a house removed for under ten thousand, unless it's a really small thing with that much of a basement. Or not much debris or junk, a lot of these collected, flooded structures were are full of stuff and that takes you have to separate it out, you can't throw it away with your house. So it it could be two or three or four days, sometimes a week, one or less than nine. They they cleaned on that, they took two, ten days to remove all the stuff out of the house. So that adds, you know, a lot of times they won't get in to see what's there before they build them. But it I, that's always, it it's a non-conforming property that they but it was illegal non-conformant because it was legal because it was put in, those were put in before zoning was even a an issue, so if it was allowed, I mean, back in the day, you could put a trailer house in your backyard and run it out before zoning came in. So you have to allow it to exist as long as it's being maintained, but in this case, they were it's just one of those troubled properties that I'm happy to get rid of and see developed in the suburbs hopefully.
But around it and across the street is residential, is that?
Yes, and that's uh, that's always an issue when you have that. It depends on if it's adjacent and abutting or adjacent, it could be adjacent and across the street. You have to understand that lot there has, it's surrounded by three commercial properties.
It is, I I drove by.
It's kind of, you know, it can be, it depends, you know, when you send out letters two hundred feet, every property owner within two hundred feet gets a letter. So they know it's coming, you know, something's happening in their neighborhood and I usually get calls and you explain to them or what's going on and if there's a lot of resistance, you'll have people at the public hearings.
Which hasn't happened yet, right?
No, it's happening on uh Tuesday, the twenty seventh, and then we have a fourteen day protest period. If if the rezoning gets recommended, then we'll go through with the conditional use permit of the carrying. But if the rezoning gets rejected by the planning commission, then the conditional use permit becomes a moot point, but those don't happen until this commission accepts the recommendation and you can't do that until you have the fourteen day protest period which allows the property owners within two hundred feet to protest that.
But this is directly kind of demolition of the property.
This this is completely separate, can occur separate from the rezoning and from the conditional use permit.
Correct.
I mean, looking at this, like the big picture of it, I obviously like those trailers need to come down, so this is a wonderful opportunity to get those trailers. The negative part of it is that we continue to sometimes mingle residential and commercial properties throughout the city and that is not probably like the overall objective of what we're trying to do with housing and stuff. As soon as that business was in residential property mingling. I love the idea of having storage because we've already had the conversation of RVs, boats, extra vehicles parked on yards or out in streets and um you know, people can't see to get by or they're parked there for a long period of time. And that can be an issue, so it's wonderful to have a resource to be able to put those things. Love the idea, putting that somewhere that is more industrial would be more ideal, but it doesn't take the trailers down.
That's why it doesn't require a conditional use permit in an industrial zone. If it was on industrial, it wouldn't wouldn't even have to go through a deal, you just do a site plan and give a building permit and build it.
Right, which is, I I mean, which would, in my opinion, would be ideal more in an industrial area first.
Correct, and that's why the zoning regulations and the conditional regulation require you to review thirteen items that you have to comment on and, you know, traffic increase that affect on the neighborhood there. And that's why some of the zoning regs require screening, you know, and it's it, I just finished a report on one today and uh you know, when you're adjacent and abutting, you have to have screening between the commercial and residential. One thing you have to worry about in something like that is what kind of, what's that gonna do to the neighborhood with traffic? And lights, headlights at night, things like that, so and you know, you can really affect the neighborhood, but how often is you know, an RV storage place is it busy, busy, busy day, night, twenty four seven, you know, a couple weeks in the spring and a couple weeks in the fall and then, you know, a few times in between. Those kind of things, there are always a judgment call in some cases, in some cases you don't know. And that's why when you redo zoning and make, if you look, the beginning of the zoning rules, there's a page, a whole page of amendments. That's been done in my time here and you look at things and one of the things that we talked that we talked about is somebody allowed when I first got here, the planning commission told me that the that the current zoning rules, that they've been amended a few times. They, the downtown C four district, they they, there were some uses allowed down there that were very controversial, like body shops downtown. And uh I was told by the planning commission chairman at the time that they did that purposely to keep downtown alive. Well, I'm not sure that that's so necessary anymore. I think some of those uses that are allowed in certain areas should not be allowed. And we've had recent evidence of that.
But for the purpose of this conversation, do we want these trailers?
Yes, we want the trailers.
So to get back on track, do we want these things to hold or?
To accept three sixteen east sixteenth into the demolition program and authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of twelve thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hudsonson, second by Commissioner Hatch to accept three sixteen east sixteenth into demolition program. Authorize the city manager to sign the contract with the owner based on the lowest bid of twelve thousand dollars. Dalton Earth, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you. Uh do we want to go back to the appropriation ordinance fifteen?
Yeah, just email that out to us with their email. I apologize about that, I always make two copies and one goes on the website. So I must have chatched it along, you know.
Yeah. Like you worked as hard as the mayor.
Make every attempt next time, do it the way you would do it.
Still. Your honesty, what's acid magic?
Acid magic.
I I bet there is.
Someone clarity.
There's a lot of good ones of that. Move to approve appropriation ordinance number fifteen.
Moved by Commissioner Jackson, second by Commissioner Hudsonson to approve appropriation ordinance number fifteen. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes. So at this point, um moving on to manager's report.
Mayor Fisher's um housing project with Saint Joseph's Infrastructure is wrapping up on the public infrastructure portion of it. And our next steps will be to begin a little bit of publicity, we are hoping to use some kind of a groundbreaking for homes to begin to be built and still anticipate home construction to begin this fall. We have been visiting with people that are interested in purchasing the homes, so that's very, very encouraging. And we think that once the first term starts going up and we ramp up publicity, that will have a lot more people interested, so we are very, very encouraged by that. We are noticing an uptick in nuisances, specifically tall grass and weeds at the curb edge of people's yard. And I don't know if you've noticed that as you drive around town or not. Stacy and her team have worked us a little bit of publicity to put out on that, encouraging neighbors and reminding them that they are responsible for the space of their yard between the sidewalk and the curb edge and to get those areas trimmed and then we'll begin a kind of a special nuisance enforcement really good to to that here next week. We'll put out that publicity yet this week and give them the weekend to to take care of that and then begin enforcement next week. We'll be traveling to Sycamore next week for a league policy committee meeting. It's the statement of municipal policy that we discussed earlier for the twenty twenty five legislative session and then doing some form work as well for them. Um I did visit with Annie Burgman, a little chamber, their fall fest planning is in full swing and underway and it sounds like it's gonna be very, very encouraging and very big this year again with a lot of vendors. Um some really special entertainments, I think it'll be a lot of fun. The theme this year is come grow with us, so if you have anybody that's gonna be a part of a parade, encourage them to incorporate that theme into their parade floats. Fall Fest will be September twenty eighth this year and should be, should be a lot of fun. Appreciate everybody that's serving on that Fall Fest preparation meeting. Um and helping to make it a success. That's all that I have to share today. If you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Is it worth trying to work with that to anything we can do to take everyone who's here for a reunion and encourage them to go take a peek at the new housing development?
That is a clear thought, let's see how we can.
Yeah, I'm not saying tours on that day, it's a busy day, but at least something that they, or a sign, or I don't know what we do. There's a great sign out there right now.
Just to to get some more information, go take a look.
Any else hearing? Staff reports.
I just wanna let you guys know, we started on curving gutter sidewalks, we got two sidewalks completed. They poured one today, they'll cut it tomorrow. That will leave us with one more sidewalk to do and seven new residences with the curves. So we're paying them.
So as you were, Officer Garcia left about a month ago to um Scott City with his wife to get a job. Since then, I was able to hire Adam Sorrell, who has over twenty some years' experience in law enforcement to take um Sergeant Garcia's spot as a road sergeant. And then um yesterday I was able to fill my last position um with Jessica Sanders, she is um currently working for Bellville Police Department and she'll start with us next week. So I'm back to getting full staff. Congratulations. And then while I'm here, did you guys have any questions over the KPI crime staffs?
No, other than just great work. I mean, I know it took a lot of effort, a lot of people in your department. And so they need to uh stay on top of, and really it was just staying on top of things, I think.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know preaching to the choir, but I think, I think anytime that there are statistics that come out, people can get uh take different meanings from it, but I think I don't necessarily know that there's been anything more going on, just that there's more. I think that the, to speak to what Ashley was saying, the work that your officers and your your staff are doing is addressing this, uh and I know that there's really no one I've talked to that doesn't appreciate that, so please, please uh know how much your efforts and and those of your your team are appreciated.
I appreciate it, I'll definitely pass it on myself. Thank you guys.
Other staff reports?
Why, could you want to show your side of it?
Oh, you're so invited to the, I don't know if you really call it an open house, that's a better I don't really exactly what it's called, but anyway, we will have the working train statue bailing or whatever, and several family members will be there, and this was a date that they picked, what's at two o'clock on Friday, so.
Are there any open uh units that have been rented?
Oh, we talked about that, the ones that she really would like to show or clear on the underside of the complex. So if nothing else, she's gonna have pictures of them up on a we bought one of those dividers from the old hospital and she's gonna pin those up there, but she may have some open. She has to talk to the rest, because there's, there's no open ones now, so she'll have to get permission for people to go in. So kind of exciting.
Uh any other staff reports? At this point, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn to a study session.
Mayor Fisher reports.
Uh good, I guess. Sorry about that, Mayor Fisher reports, Ashley.
Sure, I have one, that's why I mentioned it. So Chris, I saw that someone mentioned this on the interwebs, which makes it not completely self-serving, but can we change the lights at the city park to go on at eight instead of nine? Is that possible?
Yeah, they were set for seven thirty.
Okay.
Um the timer got reset somehow.
Awesome.
Um but apparently it's already fixed.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I don't know if there's a lecture for a lightning strike that took out like the walking way line.
Yeah, I lost a really important game. Yeah.
Sounds like your partners did have difficulty.
That's all I have, thanks.
Or any other commissioner comments, at this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to a study session.
And so move?
Moved by Commissioner Hatch, second by Commissioner Wentz to adjourn the meeting to a study session to discuss economic development positioning. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed, same sign. Meeting is adjourned, if individuals would care to take a free break?